Hey everybody, this is Clint Lash and in today's video, doing something a little bit different. Uh, what I have for you is an 18-man study session here. And one of the things that I do with my, the players that I coach and stake is weekly I host study sessions with other winning regs in uh, this particular game format. And each week we pick a specific topic such as bubble play, heads-up play, sometimes full game reviews. And in this particular study session, what we reviewed were all-in scenarios. These sessions are uh, they're really liked by the players, they really seem to get a lot out of them. It's been a great learning tool as you get to hear other people's opinions besides just mine. Um, so it's been a great way for players to improve. And what I wanted to do was actually record one of these sessions and uh, see what you guys think as well. So this is my first time recording these sessions, so I would definitely like to get your opinions. Whether you like them, dislike them, if you like them, I'll keep uh, recording them and making these types of videos. And if you don't like them, I'll never do them again. So um, definitely want to get your opinions on what you thought about this session. And in particular, you'll see, this is for all-in scenarios. Uh, what I did was I filtered my own database of hands, picked out a few hands that seemed to be interesting. All-in spots, you know, 7-15 big blind area, calling all-in, shoving all-in, handling some 3-bets. So definitely some pretty interesting spots, good conversation, and I hope you enjoy. Alrighty, so in this, um, all these hands are gonna be from 18-man games of course for this uh, this group session. And what I tried to do was filter my hands and I grabbed about 20 or so hands. Pretty much all-in scenarios with 7-15 big blind effective stacks. Um, so it's gonna involve calling all-ins, shoving all-in. Um, some of them, you know, we'll try to point out the regs, you know, calling against regs and randoms is a much different scenario. So um, you know, a lot of these hands will have to do with what we know about the players and, and the stats of the players. So let's uh, let's just jump right into it and talk about these, these hands. So, here we go. Now, this is pre-final table, it looks like, wow, blinds are pretty high for a pre-final table, but uh...
I think it's final table because that's...
It's a final table.
Is it the final table? Oh, sorry, I thought this guy had 1600, I already missed up. He has 16,000, so much so, so we're in the money. Um, I already misread the hand. So, we have Typhon7 who is a reg. What do you guys think here?
I...
He's, he's probably shoving about 7... Um, close to winning two cards here. I think it's possible to call here, him, cuz I don't know if he will have another good chance. I think it's probably, it's a probably a call.
Gregor, you said you would uh, you would fold.
Yeah, cuz I gotta assume that he thinks that, you know, he, he doesn't have that much fold equity against you. You'd be eager to pick up chips. So considering that, I don't think he's pushing any 2-cards ever. For me, he's closer to a 60% range, I think, maybe even a bit either. But 60% is what I would shove in his spot.
Um, one important point to point out here, on my end, not necessarily what he's thinking. But when I'm trying to think about whether I should call here, yes, of course, you know, the, the guy who's shoving their range is probably the most important. But another important factor is, how is the rest of the game gonna play out? Now, I'm getting short here, I'm the shortest at the table. Um, the thing that really sucks for me is, I've always got this guy directly to my left. So I'm never really gonna have many good opportunities to be shoving all-in against him very wide and, you know, having fold equity. So that has to play a role as well in, you know, how much are we gonna be able to really steal? You know, if stacks were even and I could be stealing from the guy to my left non-stop. You know, I, I think um, you know, we definitely have to tighten up our range here because we're able to. Um, now here's a little thing that I know, you know, about this reg here. He shoves any 2-cards in these spots very, very frequently. And he shoved any 2-cards into me many, many, many times. And I have said, and I've said to him, I've spoken with him, that I don't think he should shove any 2-cards into me purely for the sake that I know that he's shoving any 2-cards into me. So I can call him much wider and I know that, you know, he wakes up with ace whatever, fine. I also know that 5 deuces in his range as well. Um, so, now he should also be shoving very, very wide into me. I know he doesn't, he may not have a ton of fold equity, but he should be shoving pretty wide here, given the stack distribution at the table. Um, so if he shoves really wide here, I don't blame him, I don't think it's a bad play. But accordingly, I mean, that's my assumption going into this hand is that he is shoving, I'm assuming 100% here. 90%, whatever, that's, that's what I'm assuming. So obviously we have this hand in here because I do make the call. We need... And he is shoving 3-4. So it's nice to be right in your assumptions, but uh, this has to do with more, I've played against him a ton. Um, and he's done this to me a ton, so I know that I can call off with the uh, with the appropriate range here. You know, so I guess the other question is, why don't we pull this up real quick? Let's, let's just analyze this hand and sit and go wizard real quick.
Yeah, okay.
And let's make sure we have the right game here, so we can change this to an 18-man. And okay, so if we assume, let's just put him at the any 2-card, I can definitely call here. Pretty profitable, pretty profitable call. And here's obviously the range we can call with. Would I call, I, I think I would call with 10-8 suited, that would definitely be at the bottom. I, I don't know if I would, you know what, I don't know if I would call with 10-8 suited. That would be really pushing it. I could see myself calling with Jack-9, you know, any King, any Ace, obviously any pocket pair. Probably hands, yeah, Jack-9, Jack-8 suited. Um, you know, Gregor, if you make the assumption that he's shoving, let's just say 60%, this becomes a much more massive fold. You know, I don't think this is one of those spots where we necessarily have to take a negative EV play. Um, I don't mind a slight, like a break-even call or slightly negative EV, this is pretty massive. So this is a much tighter calling range, obviously if he's shoving only 60%. But you know, as we've seen, you know, I'm pretty positive he is shoving any 2, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Gives me uh, comfort that the call was okay. So, alrighty.
Good read, good note. No wonder he switched over to 6-9, if you've been destroying him with this.
You know, who knows, who knows? Uh, actually, sorry. Pull everything back up here. Alright, so we're gonna work backwards here. This is just something that I wanted to uh, point out and hopefully the stats change here. Alright, so I wanted to bring this hand into play, not that it's the toughest hand in the world, but you know, as you guys know, my game is raise folding, raise calling, doing it with a very, very wide range of hands. So accordingly, when I also hold a premium hand that I'm very willing to call off my stack with, uh, I wanna, you know, keep it the same. You know, whether these guys are picking up on it or not. Is this guy a reg, Isra? I feel like I see him around once in a while.
Yeah, he's a reg, he's a reg.
Yeah, so, you know, this isn't, again, it's shoving here is perfectly fine. I kinda wanna just keep this in line with how I play and maybe induce some extra, some extra shoves potentially from these guys, especially a guy that's playing 57-43. You know, and maybe they don't know how I play, so you know, the goal was to try to potentially induce. So that's important, I would do this with a, with a quite a wide range potentially, so it's good to make the same play.
What's his 3-bet versus steal?
6.7?
I mean, and that justifies in general, 6.7 3-bet versus steal. Okay, so he has 9% on the big bet, that's different.
Yeah.
Yeah, say he has a 6.7% 3-bet on the big blind, would you still call?
So you're saying potentially raise fold here?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just asking, you know, where would you, what, what kind of uh, 3-bet versus steal value from the big, big blind would Isra have to have for you to consider raise folding his Jack?
Oh, um, given the stack sizes, I don't think I would ever raise fold ace-Jack here. Um, you know, if that's the... I mean, I don't, I don't think I could ever raise fold ace-Jack. I mean, obviously, if we had a specific read that he was only ever 3-betting like ace-Jack himself and like pocket Aces, I mean, that's, that's just an ultra tight range. I mean, obviously you can make an argument that way, but you know, against a reg, a standard player, um, I mean, I don't, I don't see myself ever, ever folding here. I don't know if I would ever have a good enough read on somebody that they would only be shoving hands in this spot that are crushing ace-Jack and that I would never have enough equity to call here. Because the thing is, shoving ace-Jack in general is, is very, very plus EV. Um, but raise calling, I'm just doing it to maybe bring in a couple extra hands if possible, especially from a guy that's, that's this uh, this loose. Now, the question is, I was actually surprised to see him show up with queen-10 suited. Because he should assume, I, if I was him, I'd pretty much assume no fold equity. So, the question is, if I would've shoved all-in, do you think he calls with queen-10? Does he call all-in?
He might, he's a reg, he's not a bad reg, so he might.
Yeah, I agree, he might call with queen-10. Queen-10 suited?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's an easy call.
Obviously it depends on how wide you think, if I was just to shove here, how wide I shove. No, I should shove, I should shove pretty wide there.
Yeah, he know, he know, he knows you. I think he, he'll call.
It's a pretty nice river.
Maybe, yeah, maybe he has a note that, you know, you've done this before and that's why he decided to.
Yeah, who knows, but yeah, that, that's just more of a description of making sure we're doing the same thing. Oh yeah, I put out this hand for a reason. Reg, again, reg versus reg battle here. Um, you know, the stats haven't refreshed, but we just saw this guy before, you know, he's a reg. He shoves, obviously I'm calling, I mean, there's no question about it. The thing is, what would you guys do with his hand? Ace-K suited, I just, I just don't agree, I mean, I know most people play this way, I just don't agree with him shoving 13 big blinds here, 13.5 big blinds here with ace-K.
Um, I'm thinking it could be a balancing act from him, you know? Perhaps he also shoves hands like ace-7, ace-6, ace-5. And maybe he just decided that in order that, so that he doesn't become too readable, he also shoves ace-K this way.
Yeah, I, I agree with you that it, it must be balancing, but in general, you know, like what's my calling range here? You know, I have a lot to lose potentially, so my calling range is gonna be pretty tight. So if he just jams, my 3-betting range here um, will be much wider than my all-in calling range because of my perceived fold equity, given if he was just to raise to like 400 here. Um, so if, you know, he's gonna get a lot more wide 3-bets out of me.
Yeah.
In this spot, when he's holding that, that type of premium hand. So, you know, like if I have, let's say for example, ace-7, ace-5 suited, I may, if he raises, I may 3-bet jam on him, but there's no way I'm calling it all-in that deep.
Yeah, yeah, I do agree. I'd rather, I'd rather induce at, in that spot.
Yeah.
It's much, much better than shoving.
Now, it may be tough for him to induce because Gregor, like you said, it could be balancing, maybe he's just been shoving. Now, obviously I don't remember what happened from this game, maybe he was shoving his, you know, any hand he's gonna play his entire range. He was shoving all-in, so it's keeping a balance, but eh...
Yeah, I know, but if he, if he min raise call, raise call, he's balanced with his range of min raise folding too.
I, I agree with you, I, I agree, I, I think it's much better to at least try to induce here. I mean, he would've definitely induced me because I don't necessarily think he has to shove 13 big blinds or, you know, 13.5 big blinds with his range. He could definitely be raise folding, so he could've got an extra...
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree that he didn't play this correctly. I think it's probably just, you know, it's somebody playing according to the whole push-fold rules, you know, basically.
Yeah, yeah, it's possible.
This was an interesting one. What do you guys do here?
P-Brazil is a tight reg, I mean, tight with the 3-bets from my experience. At least from the stats I have on him, his 3-bet is like off the top of my hand, closer to 7.5 than to 9%. So I would min raise fold, basically.
Uh, I probably would push a win, 3.
Yeah, shoving is also an option, but I would min raise my entire range here, you know, that's why I would min raise fold.
Yeah, um, I, shoving is profitable. Obviously, we're always trying to figure out what's the most profitable, what's the optimal play.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so shoving is, shoving is good and I was debating, like, should I just shove this hand? Um, so I'd go for the, the 2.5 here. I probably could've gone a little bit lower, maybe like 900, but usually in the small blind, I, I make a 2.5.
The thing here for me is, I know P-Brazil and I know that he doesn't like 3-bet as a V-still. And um, you know, that's why I would probably make it like, even a min raise and if he shoves, I'm out of here. Cuz I know that he's got a good hand.
Yeah, um, you know, I don't, again, I don't know game flow up at this point, I don't know how many times I did this to him. So, you know, we're kinda looking at each hand in a vacuum, obviously we can't disregard game dynamics and of course, this is my style anyway. I would do this with a very, very wide range. I'm stealing a whole hell of a lot, so um, one stat I would like to have, and I think, Gregor, you messed around with this stat as well, the 3-bet versus hero?
Yeah, but that's only in call the manager too.
Yeah, yeah, so that could be good information to have, even better information than just a pure 3-bet versus steal. My plan was here, like I had already said to myself before this hand, um, or when I, when I saw the hand, that I was gonna raise call, raise call my stack off, assuming he was doing this with like a 20% range of hands.
Yeah, I think that's pushing it for him. For this guy, he's definitely not 20% here.
Gotcha, so could be a mistake given outside ideas. I know that he's a reg, I probably just didn't know how tight of a reg he was. So that was my plan.
I have P-Brazil, I have him marked with, as a guy who, you know, basically doesn't re-steal a lot. Well, he's got ace-6, that's interesting.
So are you surprised to see ace-6 here?
Yeah, I am.
See, I mean, that's... Go ahead.
I was sure that he would have like ace-Jack or something.
See, I don't fault his shove, I think his shove is good, it's just...
No, definitely good, it's just not characteristic for him.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly, so um, you know, that was my assumption, that I'd expect him to shove these hands. That's why I decided to raise call it off with, with ace-8. You know, if I had a better read, like you said, I mean, maybe this is the exact bottom of his range. I mean, if it is the bottom of his range, then my ace-8 probably isn't doing that great anyway, since I'm only beating a few hands. Um, but I expected him to be in the 20% range, just that's what I expect regs to be. Or potentially even wider, to, to even shove some other Broadway hands here, um...
Yeah, and that's very reasonable, I mean, I often assume the same thing. Um, like for example, when we were talking about 3-bet versus hero, obviously hold the manager, one doesn't have that. But what I recently have kind of tried to do, and I'm not sure if it's a good idea or not, but I'm kinda messing around with it. Because there's so many regs that I play against, you know? And the regs have become quite a bit more aggressive recently with their 3-bets. What I do is, when I see the 3-bet versus steal, I add another percent or, actually 2 or 3% depending on who I'm facing, you know? Because obviously the 3-bet versus steal is versus everyone's 3-bet versus steal, not versus hero. So if I see that somebody has a 13% 3-bet versus steal, I'll add like another 3 because I have to assume that 3-betting versus me a bit more, because I obviously steal more. So um, you know, I've, I've been kinda trying to balance it that way. So if you would do that for P-Brazil, if you know that he knows that you steal a lot and that he can re-steal light, then I like the ace-8 suited call a lot, I mean, obviously that's the whole point. But what I would do is, I would just add an extra couple of percent to P-Brazil and I would have a call with ace-8 suited.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was usually my, my thinking is that, you know, especially regs who are paying attention to how I'm playing, that they could, and obviously they could see my stats and they know that I'm raising quite frequently, so...
Yeah, you know, even if, even if people only look at your VP, you know? Obviously, playing this style, you're gonna have a huge VP in PFR from uh, you know, through the entire game, especially at this stage. If they, you have to know that they're using their entire database, all the hands that they have on you, they, they see that, you know? They don't see your current session stats, they see, I mean, it's unlikely they look at that, they see their whole stats. So they probably see you at 27-22, you know, the fact that, the way that you see yourself. So you gotta know that, um, that's what they see and when they 3-bet, you gotta assume that they're 3-betting lighter sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, so I think it's important with the style as well to be able to call off a little bit lighter.
Yeah.
So, alright, next hand. Seems like a pretty obvious hand, just wanted to get thoughts. We're on the bubble here, uh, we pretty much got 4 equal stacks and... Um, you know, we have the, you know, the big stack here opening for... You say the not sure, no, I got your point absolutely, about opening up, you know, if they're perceiving us to open up wide, then we have to, they, their 3-bet versus us should be a little bit wider and accordingly, we have to call a bit wider.
Yeah.
So, um... Is that, is that about right?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Plus that.
Um, so we get a 3X from a loose, what looks like a loose random player, the big stack on the bubble here. Is this pretty standard or do you think we need to tighten up even more, considering we probably have no fold equity here by any means? So we have no fold equity, obviously it depends, you know, what we've seen him do again, game flow, seeing what he's done up until this point will determine, you know, how wide is he actually opening with a 3X raise? I will say, random players that open for 3X, not always the loosest range in the world. Um, it can be usually a pretty solid hand. But is Jacks too good to fold here on the bubble versus the big stack?
Here's the thing from my point of view, uh, if we fold, we're gonna be the short stack, you know, basically. Well, close to being the short stack, so if the blinds go up soon, we're in quite a bit of bother. And here with Jacks, it's, you know, over a, against a reg, it's probably not gonna be the greatest shoving. Well, even against a reg, I think it's gonna be a pretty solid shove, so I just close my eyes and jam. If I win, I'm prob, I'm sitting here with the chip leader and I can abuse the bubble even easier once the blinds go up. So I think I like the jam here.
Yeah, I agree, cuz the game flow is important to analyze bear this hand, but in general, I would never fold Jacks here against the chip leader at the bubble because in general, he is, he, he is make pressure over the table. So Jacks is ahead of his hand, hand range.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
Also, the 3X part is, you know, okay, we don't know if that's his standard raise or not, but the 3X uh, makes me think that he might have a slightly weaker hand, you know, not exactly, that, that does not include the top of his range. So I could consider probably shove with pocket Aces in this spot.
Yeah, see, sometimes I take, not necessarily the opposite view, but when, when a random player 3X's it, especially at this stage, I actually, it may not be pocket Aces, but it's usually not the worst hand in the world. It's a lot of times ace-King, ace-queen, half decent, I mean, I think there could be a lot of random pocket, you know, mid-pockets in this range that were obviously crushing. But you know, I, I just, I mean, I still think Jacks is too good to fold here, but um, so we ship it. King-Queen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, one of the worst hands we could've expected to show up with there, um, or the hands that we didn't wanna see, I should say.
Yeah, but it just proves that the shove you made was good and that, you know, the gamble that you made here was definitely good in the long run.
Alrighty. So, we've got a guy here who according to my stats, you know, is playing 80-20, I don't really know if he's that loose, it's only filtered for the last 5 hands. What do you guys think here?
Hmm, I, I don't know who, I don't, I don't know this guy. I, I always, I, I always call regs with queen-Jack in that spot, but against a no, in general, I fold.
Yeah, it's a, uh, it's an interesting spot. I, I wish I could remember what I was assuming at that time, I mean, I just assumed that he's, he should be shoving pretty wide. This is pre-final table, um, hopefully I got it right this time, yeah, pre-final table, pretty early. I just felt we have such a long way to go, this could be a half decent spot to, to double up, um, if he is shoving wide. You know, let's, I know this is more of a chip EV scenario, but let's take a... Analyze hand and sit and go wizard. So when does this become a call?
Probably about 40%.
Uh, sorry, this is a, uh, this is dollar EV, need to change this up.
Yeah.
Chip equity, actually we can change it to 18-man, but it doesn't matter. Um... So is he sho, I think he's shoving queen-Jack. You know, he should be shoving, let's just put it this way, he should be shoving, or he could be shoving very, very wide. Jeez. I'm very surprised by this. So, I'm happy to take a break-even shove here, um, or slightly profitable, or break-even call, slightly profitable, uh, yeah. Because I'm pretty much right at 10 big blinds, so I'll, I'll take the break-even spot. So right around here, we have to assume he's, he's shoving, let's just say 50% here for, for us to call, roughly. Um, you know, it, so essentially, this is kind of a, a guessing game a little bit because I have no idea who this player is. He may be... He may be um, shoving that wide, he may not be. Usually randoms and unknowns don't shove as wide as they should because they simply, you know, they should shove as wide as they should.
I agree.
Looking back on this, I'm not sure how good of a, a call this is, I mean, I do make the call. You know, against a reg, this is a much easier call.
Yeah, against a reg. Yeah, against a reg, it's a snap call here, but a no, in general, I fold.
Yeah, so he shows up with jack-eight suited, which, uh...
That was in the range.
Yeah, where's jack-eight suited? So jack-eight suited is pretty much in that 40% range, so it's kind of right around the break-even mark. We don't know how much wider he would have potentially gone, but... So it's an interesting spot. I'm not sure I'm in love with the call. Obviously, I like it because I won, but... It's, this is definitely a guessing game. I think, though, if you're in a guessing game, you should tighten up, because if you, I know you can't always put somebody on a specific range, but like a reg, for example. It may not be 100%, but you're pretty damn sure it's 80%, 75%. So calling here with queen-jack is perfectly fine. Randoms, this guy might be just looking at his hand and saying, hey, this is a nice-looking hand, I'm gonna shove it now, and not really thinking about fold equity and, you know, all that stuff, so... Eh, I'm not sure I'm in love with that call, so I think that's a little bit of a mistake, since I'm guessing there. X sunny boy, I feel like, is he a reg? I feel like I've seen him around.
X sunny boy, I'm not sure. I don't remember him.
Not sure.
Yeah.
For some reason, I feel like he is. I mean, obviously, so I call. What do you guys think here?
Yeah, the same as the last spot. It's a call against a reg, and I guess Randall, I'd rather fold.
Yeah, same.
Yep. I'm pretty sure I had him on a relatively wide range, and so we were correct there. But, I mean, it just, you know, sometimes, maybe I saw him shove previously, or he's been shoving really wide. But I mean, it's important just to know that, you know, if you, I guess the important point to take away from all this is if you are assuming that somebody's shoving as wide as they should be, then it's okay to, I mean, these are very profitable calls. Obviously, it gets a little hairy when, you know, you're guessing, and, you know, you're not sure how wide they are, because nothing can end the game quicker than calling off your entire stack, especially with a wide range, just because you might guess that they should be shoving. You have to be pretty sure to consistently do it profitably, otherwise, you know, like I said, calling off your stack can end the game pretty quickly. Just want those stats to refresh here. So, so what do you guys think here? We get a middle position open from this guy who has random stats, and if I pull it up, eh, you know, not many hands to go off of here.
14 hands.
Yeah, you know, from middle position. You know, middle position, it's saying 42% over 12 hands. So that's still pretty indicative that he could be wide. What do you guys think here? Are you three-betting or folding here?
First, sorry, what else? First, would be just compare the early position and middle position raise first. Even if it's like 14 hands, if you compare them and kind of go with the middle, you know, we see that the PFR from EP is 9, and MP is 33, so I guess about 20%, something like that is where his median is. So if you assume that, you know, he's raising like 20% of the time, then I like to shove the eights here.
Yeah, we definitely have to assume a good amount of fold equity. Obviously, we want to know the disparity between how wide is he opening, and with that range, how tight is he gonna be calling? Uh, let's pull this up real quick.
And, you know, that way, I would kind of, well, when I would compare it and take the average of his raises, I would kind of assume where he is, and because pocket eights is a borderline hand. Well, not a borderline hand, it's a borderline hand against a non-known. Against a reg, obviously, this is a snapshot.
What do you, what do you think here he's opening with? King-queen?
Eh, any ace, brother, suited, any pair.
So you think maybe like 20%, 22%?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, let's leave it at that. It's already a push.
Yeah, yeah, I think he is probably folds weak aces here. We have, we've got some fold act here.
Yeah, so whenever you're making a determination of whether to three-bet somebody, it obviously first has to come down to how wide they're opening to begin with. Because if they're opening wide, then there's obviously a good amount of hands we can already assume fold equity against. And also, even if he wants to call off wide, there's a good amount of hands that were crushing in his range as well. So that's what it really comes down to, is how wide is he opening? You know, when does this become fold? You're starting to get there now. You know, like 13%, yeah, so like the 14, 15% area is when it really starts to become borderline.
Yeah, but then you gotta adjust the call ranges, you know?
Oh, sure, sure. But I think he might call off his stack with this type of range. I don't think that's too, too far off.
Yeah, I was just gonna say. I don't expect him to call off with king-queen suited, but that runs out now.
Yeah, there is an edge here of .16. I think we don't need this edge here. It's a break-even play, or a close break-even play. It's okay here.
Yeah, I think this is a spot where it's okay to gamble, you know, there's eight players left. You can build up a stack, possibly if you win the hand, or you can add nicely to your stack and come closer to being the chip leader, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
That's always an element, you know, there's always the future equity to consider. But given this, given our stack, we have a stack, I mean, I'm always trying to ask myself, do I have a stack at the moment that could win this? And sitting here with 3K at 150, 300, yes, I do. My stack is fine. Obviously, we'd like to pick up more chips, but I'm not in any desperation mode. We're getting close to, getting close to the bubble. Uh, you know, we're working our way there. We've got a lot of even stacks at the table, but... I don't think it's a situation where we need to potentially take any unnecessary risk to just say, you know, hey, if we win this, though, we'll have a big stack, and then we can abuse, you know, the table. Uh, you know, when you have this much to lose, I don't think that should be the thinking. I'm more looking to get in some really good, potentially uncontested pots, to just keep adding to my stack, and not really look into battle too much with guys that have me covered at this point. With that being said, you know, if it's considerably plus EV, then it's considerably plus EV. And if I'm assuming that he is opening even this wide, we have to shove here with eights. So, I don't necessarily disagree with my shove, but, you know, I think it's just good to look at, at what range is it okay, and what range is it not okay? And I ship it, and I think he shows up with kings, so obviously, I should have folded. You know, but we never really know how wide he's opening. Obviously, he's open wider than kings.
Yeah.
But I think it's more important just to look at the stacks. Why in God's name is this hand in here? I have no idea. Skip that one. Um, so we are one off the bubble here. We've got a really short stack at 700 chips, so we might as well almost consider this the bubble.
Yeah.
We got Afuno, who is on the button, I know stats haven't refreshed yet, but he's a reg.
Yeah, he's a pretty, pretty aggro reg.
Yep, yep. So what do you guys think about this spot?
Easy jam.
Yeah.
It's an interesting spot, because if we consider ICM here, I think that's a fold with ace-jack suit, because we are close to the bubble. But if you think we can pick up these chips and abuse the bubble, if you think that we would have future equity, I think it's a call. It's an interesting spot.
I don't think ICM is ever gonna say this is a fold if you use his proper stealing range.
What do you guys think he should be shoving here, or would he be shoving? I mean, put yourself in his spot. You guys are regs, he's a reg. What would you shove, given these stack sizes and how close we are to the bubble?
I would shove N cards here, N card here.
Maybe not any two, but 80% for sure, you know, because I would expect, somebody would expect me to shove any two.
Yeah, I may not necessarily be any two cards. You could certainly be close, let's just put it that way. And it's a very profitable shove on his end, to be shoving very wide. So if we know that, I think ace-jack suited becomes a snap call.
Yeah.
You know, it becomes a little bit different when, I mean, even if a random was shoving there, I think ace-jack suited is too good to fold in this spot. Because this is one of those times where I think you can say, you know, we are most likely ahead, most likely doing very well with, you know, against his range, even considering ICM. And when we win this, we put ourselves in a very comfortable second-place position going into the bubble, and we can abuse the guys to our left. You know, because if we fold here, you know, there's no guarantee that we're making the money. And I know there's no guarantee anyway, even if we double up, but given the stack distribution, we're pretty much the short stack. So we're gonna, we're gonna be the ones that have to make a move anyway around the bubble to, to make sure we give ourselves a shot of getting into the money. So this calling here, I think, would guarantee that, or at least give us a very, very good shot at it.
Could you run this rand at sit-and-go wizard, please?
Yeah, let's do an sit-and-go wizard.
To check, okay.
Alright, so, so yeah, let's run this in sit-and-go wizard, so the ace-jack suited hand. Analyzing sit-and-go wizard. 18 man. Um, yeah, obviously, if he was only shoving 16%, then this would be a fold. We know that it's not 16%, we're assuming, I mean, let's just go, you know, 65% is massive.
Yeah.
You know, so you could call ace-10, pocket eights, you know, is he going with, you know, even wider? I don't know. You know, I, it's also, I'm also interested to see, you know, how wide we can call, given how wide he is shoving. For some, man, I would have thought this would actually have been wider to call. And I know this isn't really considering future scenarios, so I may give myself a little bit wider of a range. But, man, not too much wider.
You could, what you could do is use that sit-and-go wizard rule that you use, and give yourself an edge of minus 0.2.
You're saying the edge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, because you said, you expanded once, and every big line under 10.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's that rule, you know, like every big line, that you're under 10, you can drop your edge to, you know, drop it by .2. In this spot, I don't necessarily think we need to or want to take a negative EV play, just given the stack distribution. Um, I think in certain spots, I think that more pertains to understanding when you have to take a negative EV shove. You know, like, let's say you're getting short stacked, and, you know, you're at a full table still, and the blinds are coming around, and you're sitting with like eight or nine big blinds with a marginal hand in late position. I think taking a negative EV shove there is appropriate, because we need to prevent ourselves from getting blinded away and preserving future equity. Here's not really that spot, so...
Alright.
You know, I think break-even is fine, I guess. I probably still want to leave maybe a little bit of an edge here, to compensate for the fact that I don't know how wide he is shoving. So ace-jack is definitely good.
Yeah, it's a call, it's a call.
So, alright.
What did he shove?
Uh, it's a good question. Let's find out. Ace-10.
Ace-10.
Standard.
Yeah, so we don't know how wide he is shoving, but, I mean, it should be wide, it should be definitely wide.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, obviously, ace-10 suit isn't the bottom of his range.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Okay, I believe this guy's a reg. Kuzi 11.
I don't know. I haven't seen him around ever.
Yeah.
What do you guys think here? Would you three-bet?
Versus a reg, definitely.
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay. I would probably call him, so I'd three-bet two.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason, I mean, I would call his raise with maybe like jack-10, queen-10, those types of hands that play well post-flop, that I don't necessarily want to just ship it all in. So, here, I'm most likely three-betting or folding. I guess my concern, looking back at this hand, is, you know, most regs, so, my concern is a lot of regs would just open shove here with a lot of their, you know, ace-10, ace-jack, ace-queen. So is this purely inducing? You know, I mean, if it's purely to induce, obviously, we should fold. I don't think we really know that at the time. I think it's a pretty standard three-bet here, in general. Yeah, so he was inducing me.
Yeah.
Sneaky bastard.
Nice deckery.
But of course, we, nice river. This guy's a reg. Zuz, whatever, however you say his name, Zuzuni.
Zuzuni, yeah, he's a reg.
What do you guys think? Call, fold, standard call?
Yeah, it's a call.
This is chip EV, then, yeah, I guess I like it.
Yeah, it's a snap call here.
Definitely calling. He is shoving as wide as we expect there. You know, so that's kind of a good little, you know, and again, it might be a snap call for us, may not be a snap call for others. It's just, you know, if you're a reg and you're facing another reg, you should put yourself in their spot and say, what would I shove here? And based upon you shoving the appropriate range, which should be practically any two cards, you can call off with the appropriate range. Now, the next three hands here were a series of hands from the same game. It was a very interesting bubble, uh, yeah, very interesting bubble. We didn't even get to, I don't think I put it in the into-money stuff, so... It's definitely a very interesting bubble. So we have a nice stack here. We get the big stack to fold. Are you guys shoving here?
Yeah, all day long.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, good, good. So pretty standard shove. Right, and sexy gogo is a reg, and calls us off, fine, but we accordingly get a little bit short stacked, which leads us to the next hand. Now, actually, this isn't the next hand. This bubble has gone on, if I, I remember this game like it was yesterday, it was kind of weird. This bubble went on for quite a while, and I had the chip lead going into this bubble, so it's very frustrating to see that my stack is where it is right now. So we, you know, we got there pretty quickly, but it was definitely going on for a little while, and Mar2MChat, um, he's a reg. So we're on the bubble here. What do you think here?
It's tough for me. I mean, I'm not prone to making calls like this. But there's, I'm sure there's some compelling arguments to call.
What do you guys think?
Uh, I think I would probably fold here. Consider ICM, I'm not sure if it's a plus EV call with king nine off. Maybe king nine su-suited. It would be a call. I'm not sure.
Well, let's look at the scenario. We're the shortest stack. I don't, I mean, yeah, Christian, like you said there, he's supposed to be abusing it. He should be shoving N two cards here, absolutely.
Yeah.
So one, we know he's shoving N two cards. Two, we're the short stack. Three, when we fold here, I'm always gonna be shoving into another reg that has us covered. And he's gonna know that I'm shoving, like, I'm never gonna be that comfortable shoving since I'm gonna assume minimal fold equity. So I think, even if this is a break-even or slightly negative EV play, now, I, I think it's plus EV, I'll look it up in Sit Go Wizard. But, um, I think that this is a great spot to get it in ahead as a short stack, instead of folding and shoving with a five or six big blind stack when we don't have as much fold equity. And who knows how many times we'll be able to shove, you know, depending on how, how much this guy to our right here is gonna abuse the bubble with his, with his stack. So there's a lot to consider in the future about how this game is gonna play out. And let's say we don't get a spot to shove before the blinds come around again. Now we're in total desperation mode. So I think this is a good spot to take a stand, double up, give ourselves a really good shot to stay alive and get, get into the money here.
Okay.
Alright.
And we'll look it up in Sit Go Wizard. So he is shoving four, five, definitely a little bit of sweat on the turn.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and even if this was slightly negative EV, uh, I'm okay, this is where I'm okay with calling. Um, we can take a look at this, though. Hands, king. King nine. He is not shoving twenty-eight percent. He is shoving one hundred percent.
Yeah.
There you go. Very, very plus EV.
Yeah.
Started waiting, man, yeah.
Surprising me.
Okay, so it's a little bit different, but it's still plus EV. I'll take a plus EV spot here any day, given this stack. So that shows you how wide you can call, given he's shoving.
Yeah, yeah. Against, against N two cards, a plus EV call. Nice, nice, nice.
Uh, there's the other hand in here. There was one more hand from this game that was very interesting. Uh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, so yeah, we showed that the king nine was a good call, and that was at two hundred, four hundred blinds. Now we're at three hundred, six hundred, so this, this has been going on for quite a while, this bubble. And this guy who was once the big stack as well is no longer the big stack, so chips have been exchanged back and forth. Now what do you do?
Now I call.
Yeah.
Jack, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I, the game, the game flow and the game dynamics really played a role in this. Which, again, you don't really get the full appreciation for in just replaying the hands, but, like I said, game's been going on for a while, everybody's been exchanging hands, I think, chips back and forth. Uh, we already know that he should be shoving N two cards. Given, again, how the game has gone, this can be a great spot to just essentially end it. You know, we're probably well ahead of his range, you know, we're, you know, we're still a little bit short, um, and it should be a great spot to just knock him out and give ourselves the chip lead, actually, going into the money. So I'd like to call here, and he's shoving six, four. So he made the correct shove, and he has to be shoving that, but accordingly, you know, we also have to call as well. So he may know that he's shoving wide, but we also have to call. So those are the times when we're getting a little bit short stacked, where it's okay to take those break-even spots or slightly, um, negative EV spots there. So that was, go ahead, Greg.
If he knows that we're calling king nine, should he be shoving six, four from the small blind?
That, that's a good, that's a good debate to have, um, you know.
I mean, in my opinion, no, but.
Yeah, I think no.
We're, we're in, it's a, it's a little bit different of a scenario. Like, he may have assumed before, you know, hey, I was really desperate before, so I have to, I have to call wide. But just the fact that I know that, I mean, I agree with you. I mean, I like to take the opposite approach of what regs expect me to do. I will, um, you know, if I expect them to call wide, I'm not necessarily gonna be shoving a hundred percent of my range. Um, so I, I agree with you that, you know, he should, probably should be thinking twice about how wide he should shove into me as well.
Yeah.
Here, I, I don't think it's a bad shove, though. I, I, the stacks are a little bit different. So he should still assume a good amount of fold equity, and I may not call as wide as I would have before, but king, jack, I think.
Could you maybe still put it in Sit Go Wizard?
Yep.
It's just, I mean, it's a fun, it's, it's an interesting spot, you know, to, if you know that the big blind knows that you're shoving wide and he's calling wide, should you be? Put yourself in, um, Mar two M chat's position with six, four, and give yourself a calling range of whatever king ten off is.
Now, now, here's something that I wanna point out about Sit Go Wizard. Obviously, this is showing, and I have to make it an eighteen man first. I think that we should equalize the stacks here. This is giving us, um, a range, assuming we're still alive. And I think it overvalues the fact that we're still alive, because we'll be sitting here with two big blinds, so we pretty much have to get lucky. I think to get a better or a more appropriate range would be to, again, equalize the stacks. So let me see if we can do that. Um, let's just give myself the exact same stack as him. So that we're gonna.
Or four thousand for each one?
Hey, I could give four thousand for each one.
Yeah, more crude. Real scenario, yeah.
Let's do that. So now, it's so much different, but yeah, and I think that's so important to equalize stacks. This is my opinion, um, I'm not, you know, I never went through any calculations on it, but I know that this is really taking into consideration, you know, the equity at the time. And yes, the fact that you're still alive does have some value, that your equity doesn't go from whatever it is now to zero. But
Yeah.
Do you really wanna call off with that type of range, assuming you're gonna be left with a two big blind stack and you're just gonna have to get lucky anyway? So I don't like that. So if he's shoving N two here, though, we could see how massively plus EV this still is. You know, when does this stop becoming plus EV? Forty percent? You know, I, I wouldn't take too massive, I would probably take like a break-even play here. You know, something around here, fifty percent. I mean, he's shoving, if he's shoving fifty, he's shoving sixty and, you know, so this is always gonna be a pretty good call.
Press this square and red and, red and, yeah.
Could you just put the, us in, uh, at Mar two M chat's position?
Yep.
With six, four?
Yep, so you could see it right around like fifty, fifty some percent.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, so... So what were you saying?
Six, four, six, four.
Six, four. And then if we know that you're calling, oh, look, even if you're calling twenty-two percent, he still has to shove into.
Yeah, so there is a balance to where the stack size is more important than necessarily the, the calling range. Like, it's so much more imperative to pick up chips here and essentially take them away from me. You know, when does this become negative? Eh, right around there.
Oh, interesting.
Yep, so. So would I call with king do suited? I do not think so. I probably would be in, in a range like this. Yeah, so I'd probably be like right there.
It's still a push.
Still a push. So good push by him.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think there's some pretty good scenarios in this game. Um, you know, analyzing some all-ins and, you know, maybe some plays weren't as obvious as they, they seem. And, uh, I think probably one thing we, we grabbed from this is when facing other regs who you can expect to be shoving wide, it is okay to call them just as, you know, to call them wide as well. What do you, what do you guys think? Any questions, comments, concerns?
No, it's okay for me.
I was just gonna say, I'm concerned that I don't know enough about this.
About calling all-ins and stuff like that?
Yeah, I, I see that I still need to open myself up a bit more.
It's a very tough thing to do, to call an all-in, because, you know, like we say, when you're, when you're wrong, you're usually out. You have no fold equity, you're relying on your cards, you're, you're relying on your best guess in terms of somebody's range. And some players, you're gonna know their range, you know, like I know that Tai Fun seven from the first hand. I know for a fact he's shoving N two cards there, so I can call with the appropriate range. The randoms, the unknown guys are sometimes the more difficult ones, because you don't know, are they shoving in appropriate range? Most of the time, they're not, and my, without too much information, my general assumption is that they're shoving tighter than they should in most spots, so, um, you know, we have to address that accordingly with our calling range, but you know, when facing regs, it's okay to, to be calling wide, and not that it's just okay, it's profitable when you expect them to be shoving wide. I, I always say, you know, put yourself in their position. What would you shove? Like, that one hand, you remember with the ace, jack suited? Marcel, you were talking about how it could possibly be a fold based upon ICM. Well.
Yeah, it's a mistake. It's a mistake of mine.
Well, I mean, and, but the thing is, like, you had the appropriate assumption that if you were in his position, you would be shoving really, really wide, right? Maybe N two cards, be close to it. So use that. Say, hey, if, if he's a reg, he knows what he's doing. If I'm in his spot, I'm shoving really wide. Okay, let's take what we know there and call with the appropriate range as well. Now, in that hand, I, I, I will say, in that hand, it, it recommends a tighter calling range than I would have expected, but ace, jack is still certainly within that range.
Yeah, I would call that, that spot, but I, I, I was talk, I was thinking about it's a minus EV call, but it, it, it isn't. It wasn't a minus, minus EV call.
Yep, so.
I would call.
So this is a, um, and this is what I recommend when you guys are looking through your own games and you wanna get these spots and start analyzing them. Whoops. Um, you know, put in a filter. You know, so that's what I did to get these hands. And I think it's, it's better to use effective stack sizes. So you want effective stack sizes of, you know, the typical all-in scenarios when you're seven to fifteen big blinds. Um, make sure that you go to more filters. All-in pre-flop is true. If you wanna see the spots where you're obviously involved in all-in scenarios. And then you can start messing around. If you wanna start facing three-bets, you can do that. That's another filter I'd set up, and maybe we'll go through that in another section where we're facing three-bets and how do we react to them? But, um, you know, this can be a, a nice, you know, study tool on your own, you know, this filter and go through and, and go into Sit Go Wizard. And, and again, Sit Go Wizard is a really nice tool, but it's also a good tool when you know how to use it. And what I mean by that is by putting in appropriate ranges. You know, Sit Go Wizard didn't have the best ranges in the world for a spot, so if you're just looking blindly through that and say, well, it's just a fold because the guy's only shoving twenty percent. No, we have to know when a guy is shoving a hundred percent, or twenty percent, or whatever, fifty percent. So the inputs are extremely important, so.
Yeah.
So.
Sit Go Wizard is just a calculator.
Yep, yep.
It, it doesn't think. We, we, we've got to think.
Exactly, and, and equalizing the stacks is another good one, like.
Yeah.
It, sometimes Sit Go Wizard will overvalue the fact that, hey, you're still alive if you lose this hand, but you're sitting there with like five hundred chips. I mean, how good is that really? So you should get a better range by, uh, equalizing stacks. So, alright, guys. Any, uh, questions, comments, concerns about any of the hands?
No, thanks, thanks a lot, again.
Alright, another good session. So, uh,
Yeah.
We'll have our, uh, our session next week.